Senate will come to order. The senators will please take their seats. Those persons not entitled to the privilege of the floor will please retire to the gallery. The senators and all in attendance will stand and be led in prayer by the Rabbi Stephen Rine, Agudah Acheem Congregation in Alexandria, Virginia. Following the prayer, all will remain standing and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America by our Senate Page Carche Wingfield.
Sovereign of the universe, the psalmist proclaims, "How majestic is your name upon all the earth," and wonders, "What is humanity that you should be mindful of us? We stand in awe before the beauty and majesty of your work. We are humbled that in a world so vast and a humanity so diverse, you breathe your spirit into each individual soul. Almighty God, bestow your wisdom and strength upon these members of the Virginia Senate to dream big, securing the future of this great Commonwealth. May you also grant this distinguished body the courage and compassion to dream small, as they represent the distinct needs of their constituents, ever mindful of the citizens they serve." The famous Virginian Booker T. Washington once said, "If you want to lift yourself up, lift up someone else. May you all lift up each other, working together to realize the dreams of our collective future." Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will call the roll. All those in attendance will please record their vote. Clerk will close the roll.
You have a quorum, Mr. President. Senate Journal for Tuesday, February 4th, 2020.
The senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw, moves that the reading of the journal be waived. All in favor waiving the reading of the journal will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-three, noes, seven.
Ayes, thirty-three, noes, seven. The reading of the journal is waived. The clerk report any communication from the House of Delegates. Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I rise for the purposes of an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor. Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the communication from the House of Delegates be waived? All in favor waiving the reading will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-four, noes, six.
Ayes, thirty-four, noes, six. The reading of the communication from the House of Delegates is waived. The clerk report any communication from the governor.
We do not have any, sir.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now comes a time in the morning hour where we had the distinguished honor and privilege of recognizing our wonderful guests with us here in the Senate Gallery. I'll give my usual reminder that the way this will proceed is that a senator will stand up and recognize an individual or group. I will then offer the warm welcome of the Senate, and at the very end, we will all applaud together. I'd like to begin by recognizing the senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I rise for the purposes of an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Today's opening prayer was given by Rabbi Stephen Rine of the Agudah Acheem Congregation in the city of Alexandria. He's been there since 2014, as you could see from the uniform. He's also a reserve major in the United States Air Force. He's an alumnus of NYU. He's also provided religious services to various populations, including cadets and soldiers who were wounded, and veterans as well. He's a recipient of awards and various distinctions, including the Air Force Commendation Medal with one oak leaf cluster, Outstanding, Air Force Outstanding Unit Award, National Defense Service Medal, Global War on Terror Service Medal, Air Force Longevity Service with two oak leaf clusters, and Armed Forces Reserve Medal with bronze hourglass. It's a real honor to have him down here, and I would hope that you would extend the warm wishes of the Senate of Virginia, Mr. President.
I thank the senator. Would our friend Rabbi Stephen Rine please rise in the gallery? Rabbi, thank you so much for that really moving and touching prayer. I thought it was so inspirational and uplifting. We are grateful for your moral leadership and also for your service to this nation, for the example that you've set. And Senator Sasslaw, of course, mentioned some of the many things that you have accomplished and achieved, but nothing more important than lifting others up, as you said. And so we're grateful for that example that you have set. We know it's also Jewish Advocacy Day here on Capitol Square, so we're grateful for everyone who's come to help lift everyone up in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And we echo the generous and eloquent words of the senior senator from Fairfax. And I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to Rabbi Stephen Rine. The senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator DeStef.
Mr. President, I rise for two introductions.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, the first one, we're joined today by members of the Student Leadership Committee of Historic Preservation from the city of Virginia Beach. We also have with them Councilwoman Rosemary Wilson, who I served with for eight years, eight and a half years, Sharon Felton from School Board, and included today, we have Carolyn Dixon from Cape Henry Collegiate, Kayleen Kornucka from Green Run Collegiate, Hannah Levi from Frank W. Cox, Rachel McGraw from Tallwood, and Matthew Gwynn from Bayside. Mr. President, please offer these students the warmest welcome of the Senate.
Thank the senator. Would our young leaders from the Historic Preservation Commission please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. Thank you for your tremendous leadership and contributions to the history of the Commonwealth of Virginia and Virginia Beach, but also to its future. And it's particularly wonderful, thank you, Councilwoman and School Board member, for all that you do for our children and our young people, to lift them up and make them the leaders that we need in our Commonwealth. So keep going, and I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished guests. Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator DeStef.
Mr. President, I'll continue with the introductions.
Senator, you have the floor.
Today, we're joined by constituents from Virginia Beach, Virginia's independent insurance agents. We have Clay Wiley, Drew Monroe, Ryan Tinley, Adam Haworth, and I believe a number of other independent insurance agents. If we could, Mr. President, let's give them the warmest welcome of the Senate.
Thank the senator. Would our friends from the independent insurance agents of Virginia Beach please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. Thank you for your tremendous work in our Commonwealth, improving our economy, and providing more security for our families. We are grateful for your leadership. I know that you're Senator, senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator DeStef, is particularly happy to see his constituents here in the Capitol. So you're welcome back here anytime, and I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished guests. The senator from Bath, Senator Deeds.
Mr. President, I rise for an introduction.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, the Senate today is Mental Health Awareness Day in the Capitol, and there are a group of Mental Health Advocacy Day. There are a number of groups here advocating for the needs of those who have mental illness, including young people, but all people. And they're speaking to their elected representatives about the various deficiencies in our system. There are groups from Voices for Virginia Children, they're people, Voices for Virginia's Children, the National Alliance on Mental Illness of Virginia, Vocal Virginia, Mental Health America of Virginia, and SARAH. I would ask that you give them the warm greetings of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would our friends and leaders here for Mental Health Advocacy Day please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank each one of you for being here, and thank you for your commitment to supporting all eight and a half million Virginians and raising up the issue around mental health care. And I was about to say, mental health is health, just like every other kind of health, and we appreciate all that you do to de-stigmatize it and also to make sure that people can have a brighter future. And so we are grateful to you. We hope you have a great Advocacy Day here on the Hill. And of course, Senator Bath, Senator from Bath, Senator Deeds is a champion around this issue, and we're grateful for his leadership. I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished guests. The senator from Falkir, Senator Vogel.
Good morning, Mr. President. I rise for purposes of an introduction.
Good morning, Senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, I'd like to direct your attention in the gallery this morning to some very special people who are here, in part because they have worked tirelessly this entire legislative session on behalf of legislation for firefighters. They're here to celebrate today the passage of SV-9, and they have also worked really for the whole year, and I'm super proud to be able to introduce them this morning. One is John Wright. He's the Legislative Director of the Virginia Professional Firefighters, and he's here with his son Gavin, which is very special. I think it's hopefully an educational event for Gavin, who's missing school, obviously, Dad. Also in the gallery is Joe Mirable, and he's the Vice Chair of the Professional Firefighters Legislative Committee. And I know that if he could, he would extend a special thanks to the senator from Chesapeake and the senator from Prince William and the senior senator from Fairfax, who did a lot this session to help them, and also I participated as a patron on those bills for PTSD and cancer. And with that, Mr. President, I would ask that you please extend to them the very, very warm welcome of the Senate and our gratitude for their work.
I thank the senator. Would our friends John Wright, Gavin Wright, and Joe Mirable please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for being here today. Thank you for your tremendous leadership on behalf of our firefighters and our communities, really heroes in our community. And I know the senator from Falkir, we echo her generous and eloquent words, and also other senators that you've gotten to work with, to really support people who put their lives in line every single day for every single one of us. So we are grateful to you. We applaud your successes, Gavin. You're welcome back here anytime, and we'll get you back to school someday, but today's your day to be in the Capitol, so we're very happy to have you here. I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished guests. Senator from Prince William County, Senator McPike.
Mr. President, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
I thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a very special group in the gallery that, Mr. President, you might be familiar with. We have a very accomplished and well-respected Realtor, Conchita Wanzer Clark, as well as Sidney Clark. And a little explanation, I know Sidney just retired after 42 years as an American Airlines pilot, and so congratulations to him. But there's something else that's a little bit special. These are actually the parents of one Dr. Serena Fairfax, Mr. President. That would make these your in-laws. And as you know, Dr. Serena Fairfax was also a classmate of my wife at Woodbridge High School, so it's great to have some folks from Prince William and Lakewood here. Additionally, joining him is your uncle-in-law, Co-Chief Wanzer, and Kevin Pope, your brother-in-law. And so, Mr. President, I ask you to give them the warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator very much. Would Conchita Wanzer Clark, Sidney Clark Jr., Co-Chief Wanzer, and Kevin Pope please rise in the gallery if you, I know you're able. Thank you all so much for joining us here today. It's always an honor to have you here in the Capitol. We thank you, you're an incredible family, and I know Dr. Serena Fairfax and our whole family, we're so proud of you, and you're here for Realtor Day, so we're here to celebrate you, the Prince William County Realtors. Thank you for your leadership. Sidney, congratulations on an extraordinary career, chief pilot of American Airlines, having flown for 42 years and broken some significant ground and made some history. So we love you all very much. It's great to see you in the Capitol. I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate And I thank the senator from Prince William County very much. The junior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Housme. Good morning, Senator.
It's my honor this morning to introduce the Virginia Association of Museums, who are joining us this morning. And our museums and humanities programs are not only the stewards of the rich Virginia history that we have here, but Virginia has more than 800 museums, galleries, and cultural sites that account for more than 12,000 jobs in Virginia. Museums contribute more than $21.5 billion tourism dollars to Virginia, and the association was actually founded in 1968 and has a membership of 2,500 museum professionals from throughout the Commonwealth. And one thing that the VAM does is to grant awards, and this evening, a grand award to the Patrick Henry National Memorial at Red Hill for the conservation of a 1792 handwritten letter by Patrick Henry will be made this evening at the Legislative Reception and Awards Ceremony at the Virginia Museum of History and Culture. If our committees will end on time this evening, I sure hope that we will all get to join everybody at this important reception. Thank you so much.
I thank the senator. Would our friends from the Virginia Association of Museums please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you. Oh, yeah, yeah, there we go. Close. Getting close. Thank you all so much for joining us here today. Thank you for your tremendous leadership in such an important industry and area here in the Commonwealth of Virginia. You add so much to the richness of the great history here of the Commonwealth, but again also to its future, educating future generations about the best of who we are and taking a close look about who we want to be. And so we echo the eloquent, generous words of the senator from Chesterfield, Senator Housme. You, of course, are welcome back here anytime. Many of us hope to get to your reception tonight, and I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished guests. Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Good morning, Senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President, I hope that today we will all join together in welcoming the American College of Nurse Midwives, my colleagues that I work very closely with. Today, we have the ACNM that is representing certified nurse midwives and certified midwives. We have only 250 nurse midwives in Virginia. That is not very many, Mr. President, when you consider how much they do. In Virginia, there were 11,550 births last year, and midwives attended almost 12%. The World Health Organization has named 2020 the Year of the Nurse and Midwife to recognize our contributions, and so has our governor. So, Mr. President, I hope you will make the warmest welcome to the midwives that welcome our babies into the world all year long in Virginia, night and day, and celebrate them here today. Thank you.
I thank the senator. Would our friends and leaders from the American College of Nurse Midwives in the gallery please rise if you are able? Thank you all so much for the tremendous work that you do every single day to bring new lives into this world and to support our families. We are so grateful to you. I know that the senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan in particular, is so supportive of the work that you all do, and as is everyone else here. My sister is a labor and delivery nurse, so she also is very appreciative of the work that you do. Congratulations on your success. We look forward to much more of it in the future, and I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished guests. Do any other senators wish to be recognized for purposes of an introduction? I'd like to now call on Madam Clerk. Clerk report any communication from the governor.
Mr. President, I have been asked by His Excellency Governor Northam to please, on his behalf, convey his warmest wishes to Senator Sasslaw on his 80th birthday today.
Mr. President, I just want to thank the governor and all of my 39 other colleagues here today, and the people in the gallery. It's a great honor just to be here with all of you, really. I don't want to get into age, but as I told people, Jefferson and Madison told me if I hung around long enough, I'd be dads like this. But anyway, thank you all so very much for that. I really, you don't know how much it means to me, you know, for you all to do this and to have friends like you. Thank you, Mr. President, and Madam Clerk, and your wonderful staff.
Mr. President.
God bless you. Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
The senior senator from Fairfax yield for a question.
Will the senator yield?
Certainly.
Senator yields, you have the floor.
Mr. President and Senator, my question is, where's my pen?
Senator has the floor.
I'll try to work on that and get everybody.
Bring it on.
A hundred years from now.
We got some other members here.
But when I'm 180, they'll be really worth a lot of money.
For what purpose, Senator from Northern Fairfax, Senator Howl, rise.
I rise to make a few comments about my seatmate.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you. As we all know, and we just heard again, my seatmate is now 80, and attending his birth were Jefferson and Madison. But I want to tell you, after sitting next to him for, oh, I don't know, maybe 18 years, I've learned a few things about his past. When he was in the third grade, the principal called his mother and said she had a rotten Oh, it was the psychologist's kid. By the eighth grade, one of his teachers dangled him upside down by his ankles out of the second-story window and told him, "Never act like that again." Dick claims he learned his lesson. In that class, he never acted that way again. When he was in the military, most of his weekends were spent in brawls, but in one memorable incident, he was driving an armed personnel carrier and sort of nicked the edge of a guy's house and knocked it down. In his first year in the General Assembly in the House of Delegates, he went to the agri-business dinner, got in a fight with a guy, decked him, broke his nose. So all of which, all of which is to say, he absolutely fits in here.
To let everybody know, you're now dealing with the kinder, gentler Dick Sasslaw.
Do any other senators wish to be recognized? For what purpose, Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for an introduction.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. With us in the gallery are the DMV Executive Leadership Program team. Mr. President, I'd like to introduce individuals in the gallery this afternoon. Their program was established in 2009 as an intensive 10-month-long program that provides individuals who work at the DMV with leadership skills and in-depth understanding of our state government. Their latest class is made up of 16 individuals from a variety of fields within the agency and from all over the Commonwealth. I ask that we provide them with the warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would our leaders from the DMV Executive Leadership Program please rise in the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today in the Senate. It's an honor to have you, and thank you for your tremendous contributions to our Commonwealth and your leadership at a very important time, particularly for the DMV. We know this year is a critical year, and you all have been exhibiting tremendous leadership around the Real ID and so many other things that we have to get done for all eight and a half million Virginians. So we appreciate you. We echo the generous and eloquent words of Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden, and I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished guests from the DMV Executive Leadership Program. For what purpose, Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Peak, rise.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for the purposes of an introduction.
I thank the senator. You have the floor.
I'd like to introduce several distinguished guests from Goochlin County that we have in the gallery today. First, we have our immediately retired sheriff who served at Goochlin County for a number of years with distinction, Mr. Jim Agnew. We have his wife with him, who serves us as our clerk of court. We have our immediately elected current sheriff of Goochlin County, Mr. Stephen Creasy, and along with him, a number of his sheriffs who serve in Goochlin County. I would ask you to give them all the warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator. Would Sheriff Stephen Creasy and our friends from the Goochlin County Sheriff's Office and the Clerk of Court please rise in the gallery if you are able? Sheriff and elected officials and other wonderful members of Goochlin community, thank you all so much for joining us here today. We are grateful for your tremendous service, for what you do in law enforcement to keep our community safe every single day, and I know that all of us here appreciate the sacrifices that each of you has made over many, many years, and that your families have made as well. So you're welcome back here anytime. We echo the eloquent, generous words of Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Peak, and I would ask everyone to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leaders from Goochlin. Do any other senators wish to be recognized? For what purpose, Senator from James City County, Senator Normant, rise.
Mr. President, I rise to inquire whether or not the clerk has any other introductions for the morning hour. I see there's another one. If so, you would return to me when we've completed that, please, sir.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Surville, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for an introduction.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, joining us in the gallery are a few folks from James Madison University. First of all, Norman Jones is here. Norman's a Prince William County resident. He's also the student representative on the Board of Visitors. He's the president of Bond, which is Brothers of a New Direction, JMU, working to increase diversity and inclusion at JMU. And I heard him give a speech at the NWC CP banquet in Prince William County this year, which is just an incredible speech. He's a very impressive young man. He's going place, going, gonna go great places, as long as it's not to my Senate district. And then, in addition to that, we also have the student government president, Ayala McLean, who's with us. And JMU's student government's an important place. You know, the senator from Hanover was once the senator from Ikenberry, and I was once the senator from Huffman, where we originally got our start, and she's now the student government president. She's an active member of Women of Color, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. She's an orientation peer advisor. She participated with JMU in Ghana during the summer of 2018, and they're both here advocating on behalf of JMU to get that, a little bit more money, to help with the bottom line at JMU, to get some more money to help with the Carrier Library renovation, and oh, I'm sorry, yeah, and also Dr. Miller is here, is the student, he's the vice president for Student Affairs at JMU. Oh, he is? Classmate of also your wife, Mr. President, according to Senator McPike here. And so on behalf of myself, Senator McPike, Prince William County, who I think represents Norman, Senator Morrissey, who represents Ayala, I would ask you also give them the warm welcome of the Senate.
I thank the senator, and it's wonderful to see you all. Madam President, Norman Jones, Dr. Miller, thank you all so much for your tremendous leadership at a great university, James Madison, and you have some distinguished alums right here in this very body. Of course, Senator from Hanover and the senator from Eastern Fairfax being two of them, and we appreciate all that you do to help lift up the Commonwealth and Harrisonburg and Virginia are a better place because of your work. And Norman's been giving speeches since he was about eight years old. I heard him. He is an extraordinarily gifted young man, and Madam President, you are going many, many places in your life, and so we're so grateful to you. Dr. Miller, keep up the great work. I'll tell all the Woodbridge classes you say hello, and I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our leaders from James Madison If there are no other senators wishing to be recognized, I would call on the senator from James City County, Senator Normant.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would respectfully ask that the Senate now stand in recess until 10 minutes to 1:00, and if the Senate Republicans would be so generous to retire to the prayer meeting room immediately.
I thank the senator. Without objection, the Senate will stand in recess until, sorry, Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
And if the Senate Democrats could meet in the back room.
Thank the senator. Without objection. Without objection, the Senate will stand in recess until 12:50 PM.
Senator Reeves.
Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
Mr. President, I move that the bill pass and speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, this deals with commuter benefits provided to employees to help them be able to get to and from work. As everybody knows, our state tax system is largely conformed to the federal tax system. In the federal bill that passed in December of 2017, they eliminated the commuter tax benefits, so it is no longer something that is available in Virginia. What this would do would be to reinstate it and deconform it with the federal provisions for this measure at the state level. What it would do is it would provide a tax break to the employer who provided benefits to an employee such as subsidizing their use of transit, that type of thing. So with that, I'd hope it'd be the pleasure of the body to pass the bill.
Thank the senator.
And just so you know, this does have the clause on it, so therefore, you know, we'd be contingent on that, so.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Roanoke County, Senator Suterline?
Mr. President, just speaking briefly to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
I'm under no impression or false impression of what's about to happen with it. I just, I have trouble when we keep raising taxes on a lot of other folks to get to work in other parts of the Commonwealth. When we're passing a tax credit that's basically going to be isolated to one part of the Commonwealth, and I think that in the next few days, we're going to be passing some more bills that are going to make it more expensive for a lot of folks throughout Virginia to get to work, and I find this problematic.
For what purpose, Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal, rise.
Mr. President, would the gentleman yield for a question?
Well, the Senator yield.
Certainly.
Senator yields, you have the floor.
Mr. President, could the gentleman explain to me, I represent a fairly rural district which does not have any public transportation, no buses or trains, so how would the citizens of my district be able to take advantage of this tax credit?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, there are other provisions that can be used, so if there were carpooling that was used there that had some cost to it, you know, and the employer was subsidizing that, the employer would be able to take the tax credit for that. So there are other options that are available for people in rural areas.
Thank the gentleman.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane, rise.
I'm[1501.21]
Senate Bill 213. Senate Bill 277.
Mr. President.
Senator from Roanoke County, Senator Suterline.
Can Senate Bill 277 on page four please come out of the block?
Without objection. Senate Bill 277 will come out of the block.
Senate Bill 290. Senate Bill 364. Senate Bill 400. Senate Bill 441. Senate Bill 527. Senate Bill 590. Senate Bill 668. Senate Bill 678. Senate Bill 679. Senate Bill 686. Senate Bill 695. Senate Bill 706. Senate Bill 734. Senate Bill 768. Senate Bill 790. Senate Bill 824. Senate Bill 833. Senate Bill 888. Senate Bill 927. Senate Bill 1005.
Mr. President.
Senator from Pennsylvania, Senator Reeves.
Can Senate Bill 1005 come out of the block, please?
Without objection. Senate Bill 1005 is removed from the block.
Senate Bill 1011. Senate Bill 1025. Senate Bill 1029. Senate Bill 1034. Senate Bill 1048. Senate Bill 1057. Senate Bill 1073.
The question is, shall the bills in the block pass? It is all bills except for Senate Bills 277 and 1005. All in favor of passage of the bills will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senator desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, forty, no, zero.
Ayes, forty, no, zero. The bills in the block pass.
Returning to page four, Senate Bill 277.
Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker.
Mr. President, I move that the bill pass and speaking to the bill.
Senator, as the floor.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, this deals with commuter benefits provided to employees to help them be able to get to and from work. As everybody knows, our state tax system is largely conformed to the federal tax system. And the federal bill that passed in December of 2017, they eliminated the commuter tax benefits. So it is no longer something that is available in Virginia. What this would do would be to reinstate it and deconform it with the federal provisions for this measure at the state level. What it would do is it would provide a tax break to the employer who provided benefits to an employee such as subsidizing their use of transit, that type of thing. So with that, I'd hope it'd be the pleasure of the body to pass the bill.
Thank the senator.
And just so you know, this does have the clause on it. So therefore, you know, we'd be contingent on that, so.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Roanoke County, Senator Suterline, rise.
Mr. President, just speaking briefly to the bill.
Senator, as the floor.
I'm under no impression or false impression of what's about to happen with it. I just, I have trouble when we keep raising taxes on a lot of other folks to get to work in other parts of the Commonwealth. When we're passing a tax credit that's basically going to be isolated to one part of the Commonwealth, and I think that in the next few days, we're going to be passing some more bills that are going to make it more expensive for a lot of folks throughout Virginia to get to work. And I find this problematic.
For what purpose, Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal, rise.
Mr. President, would the gentleman yield for a question?
Will the Senator yield?
Certainly.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
Mr. President, could the gentleman explain to me? I represent a fairly rural district which does not have any public transportation, no buses or trains. So how would the citizens of my district be able to take advantage of this tax credit?
Senator, as the floor.
Mr. President, there are other provisions that can be used. So if there were carpooling that was used there that had some cost to it, you know, and the employer was subsidizing that, the employer would be able to take the tax credit for that. So there are other options that are available for people in rural areas.
Thank the gentleman.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane, rise.
Mr. President, I rise to speak in opposition to this bill.
Senator, as the floor.
I like the Senator from Bodatot. I have no illusions that we're going to derail this bill. But I just want to point out that I live in the Shundo Valley, as some of you may be aware. And last year, we passed a transportation bill that included a gas tax increase for people who even don't live in counties adjoining the interstate. And those people are being taxed to help improve the transportation for people who do live along the interstate corridor. I put in actually a bill this year that would have repealed that tax for those few counties that do not, through which the interstate does not pass. Apparently failed. I wasn't given an opportunity to speak to that before it failed, but it failed. And I didn't have an opportunity to speak for the people in my part of the state. And I do appreciate the Senator from Bath, who I understand did express some sentiments in support of the cause of those folks. But it seems to me that it's kind of unfair to do this where, you know, in my district, you know, we are committing funds to improve transportation for people along the 81 corridor. And we're asking people along the corridor to pay for it. Here, you know, we are asking people all over Virginia to subsidize this tax deduction for people who are being provided this benefit unique to Northern Virginia. So I just want to point out the disparity in treatment geographically. And I would just hope that there's a little bit of red reflected to show the geographic unfairness of this legislation.
For what purpose, the senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw, rise.
Talk about regionalism, Mr. President.
As the floor.
You know, there are people who pay the metro tax every time they buy gas, but they never ride the metro. There are, if I'm not mistaken, you can go through our code and you can find tax credits for farmers. And by the way, Senator, there are no farms in my district, okay?
Mr. President, I would ask if you'd yield.
Absolutely not. And there are farm subsidies. And again, Senator from Northern Fairfax and I, we don't have a lot of farms in our district. And by the way, you know, some of the taxes that we are paying where we live are so people who live in his district, in his district, can get on 66 and ride with limited amount of traffic. We're paying for the rail so his citizens can ride in a lot easier and work in Northern Virginia. Maybe we ought to make that a toll road.
For what purpose, Senator from Northwestern Fairfax.
Mr. President, will the senior senator from Fairfax now yield for a question?
Well, Senator, I'm going to stop right there. Other senators who have not yet spoken wish to speak, so I'm going to go to them first and then we'll come back. For what purpose, Senator from Northwestern Fairfax, Senator Boycego, rise.
Speaking in support of the bill.
Senator, as the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the good fortune to represent the 33rd Senate District around the Dulles Airport region. And I believe that it is the most expensive region to have to commute in, probably in the entire Commonwealth. I have constituents who have to spend upwards of $300 to $400 each month because their toll bill is that expensive. This is something that helps regular working families, you know, make do. And I strongly support this bill. And I appreciate my good friend from Southern Fairfax for bringing this bill up. Thank you.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from James City County, Senator Norman, rise.
Mr. President, I rise to speak to the bill.
Senator, as the floor.
Mr. President, first of all, I just would observe, even on charitable birthdays, that, you know, I've been here for a few years. And over that period of time, the decorum and the way that the Senate conducts itself has slipped a little bit. And we don't have the adherence to protocol and at all times courtesy. And I would suggest, Mr. President, not in an admonition way, but just in an observational way, to direct a comment at a senator during the course of the argument, which you know is going to provoke a response. And then that individual to try to respond without being called upon probably is not adhering even liberally to the parliamentary debate. Speaking to the bill.
Senator, well, you directed that at me, I presume. And I'll remind the senator that you, some weeks ago, made another admonition that's directly contradictory to what you're saying right now, citing Rule 43, "No member shall speak more than twice upon the same subject without leave of the Senate, nor more than once until every member choosing to speak has spoken." So we can have that discussion offline, but you cited a rule that you wanted followed. When it's followed, you now don't want it followed in discretion. So I'm going to let you continue, but I don't accept your admonition.
Mr. President, I don't expect you to admonish me on the rules of the Senate, but speaking to the bill.
And I don't expect you to admonish me either. So continue.
Mr. President, I'll remind you, you are not a member of the Senate.
I was elected by 1.36 million.
Mr. President, I'm going to speak to the bill.
And you should. You have the floor.
Speaking to Senate Bill 277, here is the inequity of it, is I appreciate the challenges that you have with transportation in Northern Virginia, and I mean that sincerely. Myself, as an employee, I cannot deduct or get any credit whatsoever for my commuting mileage. As a matter of fact, on the tax return, I have to list the number of miles that I commute from my home to my place of business, and that is not a deductible expense to me. Now, that's a choice that I make because I don't live immediately close to my office, just as some in Northern Virginia make a decision to be employed substantially, substantial distance from where they reside. So I would just say, those of us who do not have a reimbursement from our corporate employer do not have any tax benefit whatsoever, and in fact are penalized for it.
Do any other senators wish to be heard for the first time on Senate Bill 277? Seeing none, I call the Senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenshane.
Mr. President, thank you. I will not ask the Senator, senior senator from Fairfax, to yield. And I do want to apologize to the senior senator from Fairfax because I apparently was not provided the memo indicating that we were not allowed to rise and question the wisdom of any bill from somebody on that side of the aisle without enduring personal attacks, as I have for two days. And I would say that that is a most unfortunate turn of events. And I would hope that we could resume our cordial relationships with one another. My comments were not intended as a personal affront to the senior senator from Fairfax or to any member of his caucus. It was to point out the disparity in treatment that was being provided to different parts of Virginia. And while I acknowledge that there may be no farms in Fairfax County, there used to be. And last time I checked, there were a handful of grocery stores. And I am aware, some people may not be, as to where the food that is sold in those grocery stores that is consumed by people all over Northern Virginia comes from. And it ain't Fairfax City. And it probably isn't Fairfax County, with the exception of the one remaining farm up there. So, Mr. President, I again would ask for a little bit of red on this bill. And it's not meant with any offense, or it wasn't intended to impugn the integrity or the intentions or the motives of the people on that side of the aisle.
The Senate will be at ease.[1160.23]
Senate will come to order. The senators will please take their seats. Those persons not entitled to the privilege of the floor will please retire to the gallery. Senator from Southern Fairfax, Senator Barker moved passage of Senate Bill 277. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 277? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 277 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Eyes twenty-eight knows twelve.
Eyes twenty-eight knows twelve. Senate Bill 277 passes.
Returning to page thirteen, Senate Bill 1005.
Senator from Spotsylvania, Senator Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask the bill passed and speaking to the bill. Senate Bill 1005 might not mean much to a lot of folks, but I just wanted to kind of bring it home of why we're here and what's happened. And many folks are going to be, a lot of our colleagues drive to Northern Virginia or drive Interstate 95. You're going to cross under a road and it's going to be named after Corporal Ryan McGee. But I thought I'd tell you a little bit about background on Ryan. More importantly, probably just read his medal and it kind of says it all. "The United States of America to all shall see these presents greeting. This is certified that the President of the United States of America authorized by executive order, 24 August 1962, has awarded the Bronze Star Medal with a V device. And that means valor to Corporal Ryan C. McGee for exceptionally, for exceptional valor achievement as a weapons squad team leader for a joint task force in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom. On this day Corporal McGee, while receiving small arms fire from an enemy position less than 50 meters from his own, fearlessly advanced on the enemy while suppressing him with high volumes of automatic fire from his MK-48 machine gun. His courageous actions allowed the Rangers and his team to maneuver their blocking position and protect the overall assault from the armed enemy. Corporal McGee's decisiveness and selfless service while under enemy fire saved the lives of his fellow Rangers. Through this distinctionous distinctive accomplishment Corporal McGee reflected great credit upon himself, this command and the United States Army, signed by Major General Voll. Unfortunately Corporal McGee was sustained injuries that cost him, as Lincoln likes to said, say, the full measure of sacrifice. And that's why we're voting this bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 1005? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 1005 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Eyes forty knows zero.
Eyes forty knows zero. Senate Bill 1005 passes.
Regular calendar, Senate bills on third reading. Senate Bill 246, a bill relating to Department of Motor Vehicles sex designation.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill passed and speaking to that motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this legislation allows for, or will authorize the DMV to allow somebody to indicate they have a non-binary sex when they have to designate their sex in their driver's license. Just so everybody's understanding of the law, Real ID does not require you to indicate male or female. The actual regulation from the government says that you have to indicate gender as determined by the state. So now there's seven states that by legislation allow this. There are 10 states that have implemented this policy administratively. And also in the state of Utah, they actually allow it, but you have to get the approval of a judge. So we're not out on a limb on this in any way. We'd be the, I guess, 18th, 19th state to adopt this. But it's, I think, important to recognize some of the changes we've seen. This isn't, it's not necessary to put down whether you're male or female in order to be able to drive a car. The states that have implemented, according to the DMV, have not experienced any technical issues with implementation. They say it's been successful and I would move that we pass the bill.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 246? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 246 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Eyes twenty-one knows eighteen.
Eyes twenty-one knows eighteen. Senate Bill 246 passes.
Senate Bill 857, a bill relating to voter registration. Public access not required for certain voter registration events.
Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that Senate Bill 857, that we reconsider the vote by which it was ordered to be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the vote by which the bill was ordered engrossed in advance to its third reading be reconsidered? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Eyes thirty-nine knows zero.
Eyes thirty-nine knows zero. The motion is agreed to. Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Thank you, sir. I would now move that we reconsider the vote by which the committee amendments were agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the vote by which the committee amendments were agreed to be reconsidered? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Eyes forty knows zero.
Eyes forty knows zero. The motion is agreed to. Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
I would now move that we reject the committee amendments.
With the recommendation that they be rejected, the question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The noes have it. The committee amendments are rejected. Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
I would now move that we agree to the, I'm sorry, that we waive the reading of the floor substitute.
Question is, shall the reading of the floor substitute be waived? All in favor of waiving the reading will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor substitute is waived. Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
I would now move that we agree to the floor substitute. And just to explain that motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, sir. Just to explain that motion. The senator from Hanover had some concerns expressed the other day that we might have been inadvertently erasing another code section, which I checked with Legislative Services. That was not the case. But just to be absolutely certain, we've taken a language that was no longer relevant in any case from that section, removed it. So the bill is pulled back to the only two changes we had, which was to allow voter registrar to conduct registration in a high school or a location of a naturalization ceremony that was not open to the public. And that is, that is what it is. And I renew my motion. Or I'm sorry, I move that we agree to the floor substitute.
Thank the senator. For what purpose? Senator from James City County, Senator Normitt, rise.
Mr. President, I rise in opposition to a portion of the substitute.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I rise to object to the language at the very end of line 42. I appreciate the reference to voter registration conducted in a high school. But then we go from voter registration to entirely unrelated and new topic. And that is, the location of a naturalization ceremony shall not be required to be open to the public. And, Mr. President, I would say that having participated in a number of naturalization ceremonies that are collected or conducted in the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, I don't want there to be an opportunity for this amendment to impact those facilities.
Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding the instant motion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the floor substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor substitute is adopted. Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
I now move that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third constitutional reading.
Question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill's engrossed in advance to its third reading. Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
I would now move that we suspend the rules and dispense with the third constitutional reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended and the third constitutional reading be dispensed with? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Eyes forty knows zero.
Eyes forty knows zero. The rules are suspended and the third constitutional reading is dispensed with. The senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Thank you. I now move the bill passed, having explained the amendment. Just one clarification, that this is, when it refers to naturalization ceremonies, these are just for people who are becoming citizens, typically in a government office or high school or something. We just want registrars to be able to register people to vote at a time that they should be feeling very patriotic and engaged in the most basic activities of citizenship. So with that, I move the bill pass.
Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 857? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 857 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Eyes twenty-eight knows twelve.
Eyes twenty-eight knows twelve. Senate Bill 857 passes.
Senate Bill 294, a bill relating to bail bondsman, petition for return of deposit for surrender of principal deposit at funds created, credited to the literary fund.
Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll try this again. Yesterday, this didn't go quite so well. But it's a simple bill. It's about unclaimed funds deposited by bail bondsman upon surrender of principal. That means somebody that they bonded out. And so we'll go through a scenario here where let's pretend that Senator Servell has been arrested for, probably for turning in too many bills. It's a felony here. And he's taken before Judge Schar. And Judge Schar has, knows that he came from a challenged neighborhood where there are, where there are shopping carts and duck blinds in his creek. And shows mercy on him and has only a $1,000 bond, okay? I am the bondsman and I have decided to bond said senator out. And so I pay for his bond, but he begins to worry me. He's showing up at the Thursday night caucus. He doesn't come in on time. I get worried. And so I decide to surrender him. And I go to the court and I say, here, I surrender him. But to do that, I have to put down a deposit, either 10% of the original bond or $50, whichever is greater, okay? See, it's the original language of the bill, of the underlying bill that is the problem, not the new language. And so at any rate, I do that. I take him back. But I have to petition the court later, after I've turned him in, and tell Judge Schar why I did it. Why did you turn him in? Is it justified or is it not justified? If it's justified, I get my money back. If it's not justified, guess who gets my money? Senator Servell does. And that's the way the law is currently written. But if I do nothing and I don't petition the court at all, then Clerk Barker, down at the clerk's office, you know, the money is still sitting there and he doesn't know what to do with it. And all this bill does is says that that unclaimed money has to go to the literary fund because I, as the bondsman, chose not to obey the law as it was written and turned my petition in within 15 days, probably because I knew I was going to lose. I don't know why I don't do it. I don't know why people don't do a lot of things in this life, but I don't. He's stuck with the money. He just needs to know what to do with it. And that, Mr. President, is the bill. And it deals with the existing problem that the clerk's office has with this unclaimed money. But it's all good. So please don't hang any red lights on this one. This one's good to go. Thank you.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 294? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 294 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Eyes thirty-one knows eight.
Eyes thirty-one knows eight. Senate Bill 294 passes.
Senate Bill 404, a bill relating to health insurance, short-term, limited-duration medical plans.
Junior Senator from Chesterfield, Senator Hachme.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that SB 404 pass for the day.
Without objection, Senate Bill 404 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 491, a bill relating to inquiry and report of immigration status persons charged with or convicted of certain crimes.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill passed and speaking to my motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senate Bill 491, I explained a little bit yesterday. We made a change from committee in the floor substitute we passed. So basically what the bill does is it restores to our constitutional officers and our regional jail officers the discretion as to whether or not to report every person arrested or to determine citizenship and then report people arrested to ICE. Right now, the code says that that's mandatory. This would make it discretionary. And I would say to the body that, you know, because of the policy that's currently on the books, it actually, I think, in a lot of ways inhibits law enforcement. And a lot of people do not call law enforcement because they're concerned about what might happen if they do. For example, you take domestic violence situations or other minor crimes. Would also note that the mandatory reporting wasn't as big of a deal until policy up in Washington changed. And since, since things changed in Washington, the number of people being removed from Virginia has expanded dramatically. And in fact, out of the 13,000 deportation proceedings that were filed in 2019, only 65 were for aggravated felonies. The rest of them, many of them arose out of, most of them, the vast, vast, vast majority arose out of misdemeanors. And so what this does is it just gives that discretion back to our localities aside. So if in your locality, your sheriff wants to keep reporting, they can. In other localities, if they don't want to, they don't have to. And that's basically what the bill does, from my perspective. Immigration law is a federal responsibility. It's not a state responsibility. We have enough to do at our state level that we're not funding. And I would hope the bill would pass. I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 491? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 491 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Eyes twenty-one knows nineteen.
Eyes twenty-one knows nineteen. Senate Bill 491 passes.
Senate Bill 9, a bill relating to workers' compensation presumption of compensability for certain diseases.
Senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Yeah, Mr. President, this is, this bill actually was put in, I didn't have it, but it was put in last year and referred to J-LARK. And basically the bill, this presumption, cancer presumption bill, is essentially their recommendations, you know, on this. The, we rejected the version that came, one from, that was put on in Commerce and Labor. When it went to finance, we accepted the finance substitution, which, as I explained yesterday, it went to finance, we accepted the finance substitution, which, as I explained yesterday, basically made sure that it was clear that it was prospective. And by doing that, you know, we were able to fund it. And all, the parties all agreed to that, and some of the other changes in there, J-LARK had recommended, instead of having 12 years of service, that it be five, and it didn't have to be continuous. So this, it was put on behalf of the Virginia Association of Firefighters. So with that explanation, Mr. President, I would move the bill pass.
Thank the senator, for what purpose is the senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove, rise.
Speak to the bill, Mr. President.
Senators, the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, I thank the senior senator from Fairfax for taking the load this year. We got it through last year, just barely, had a reenactment clause on it. But this is something that has been a long time coming, our firefighters have needed this protection for many years. And I'm really, really proud and very relieved that this bill is passing this year. Hopefully, we'll have a good reception down the hall. But this is something that our firefighters have needed from us for many years, we've owed it to them, and please vote for this bill.
Thank the senator, for what purpose, Senator from Prince William County, Senator Pike, rise.
Mr. President, I rise to speak in favor of the bill.
Senators, the floor.
I'll be brief, I just wanted to thank the colleagues who have joined in collaborating on this effort that has been, I think I've carried this bill every year I've been in the Senate, and see the bipartisan support and genuine efforts across this chamber has been immense, and appreciate the body's work, and appreciate votes in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. President.
What purpose is Senator from Falky, or Senator Vogel, rise?
Thank you, Mr. President, to speak in favor of the bill.
Senators, the floor.
Mr. President, it's actually a very special moment, because I know some of those folks who've worked on this for years and years, as I mentioned earlier, in the gallery to see this bill pass. But one thing I would just mention to the members, until you spend some time looking at the research and talking to the men and women who put their lives at risk every day for us, it's really hard to fully comprehend what those toxic exposures mean for them, and what it means for their long-term health. And their stories are heartbreaking and wrenching, and what it does to their families. And there's, there can be no doubt, when you consider the kinds of cancers that they get, that they are 100% connected to their service to us. And so, I am super grateful that so many people helped and worked for a long time, because this bill originally had a lot of, a lot of people who wouldn't support the bill, had a lot of objections for financial reasons and others. And so, out of respect for those who are here to see it pass, I want to congratulate them and thank them for their advocacy, and thank my colleagues and the senior senator from Fairfax, who got it through this year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator, do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 9?
And on his birthday, I might add.
Thank the senator. Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 9 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, forty, no, zero.
Ayes, forty, no, zero. Senate Bill 9 passes.
Senate Bill 149, a bill relating courthouse and courtroom security assessment.
Senator from Northern Fairfax, Senator Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move the bill pass.
Thank the senator, you have the floor.
And speaking to it, this bill is one that actually we have seen before. It is a totally permissive bill, it enables a local governing body to increase the fee from 10 to up to $20, so it can be anything from 10 to 20 on fines for criminal and traffic court. This money is to be used strictly for courtroom security. That's the bill.
Thank the senator, do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 149? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 149 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-one, knows nine.
Ayes, thirty-one, knows nine. Senate Bill 149 passes.
Senate Bill 593, a bill relating to licensed family day homes, storage of firearms.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move the bill pass, and like to speak to that.
Thank the senator, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Senate, Senate Bill 593 puts a statute in place that would require licensed family day homes to store any guns and fire, any ammunition present there, in a locked container separately unloaded. It would not preempt, there was a similar bill last year that would have preempted some of the local ordinances that were more strict, this does not do that, leaves those in place untouched, so I hope it will be the pleasure of the body to support the bill.
Thank the senator, do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 593? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 593 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty, knows ten.
Ayes, thirty, knows ten. Senate Bill 593 passes.
Senate Bill 664, a bill relating to motor vehicle liability insurance coverage limits.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move the bill pass, and speaking to that motion.
Senators, the floor.
So ladies back in, and gentlemen, back in 1975, the top song was "Love Will Keep Us Together" by the Captain and Tenille. Number two was "Reinestone Cowboy" by Glenn Campbell. Number three was "Philadelphia Freedom" by Elton John, I've never heard of that. Betamax introduced VHS, the average car cost $4,000. Some guy named Dick Sazlaw decided to run for the House of Delegates, and the Virginia General Assembly increased the insurance minimum for auto insurance to $25,000. And there it has stood since I was four years old. And we have two members of this chamber that weren't even here to see that glorious moment. But this bill increases the auto insurance minimum from $25,000 to $35,000. And it'll be, so it'll be the first raise in 44 years. It also will increase the auto insurance minimum on property damage from $20,000 to $40,000. Again, when this was adopted, the average car cost $4,400. So, you might ask why we, why we need this. First of all, just the rate of inflation, if you put $4,000, or you put, I'm sorry, if you put $25,000 in an insurance calculator from 1975 to today, it would be about $125,000. If you put a medical insurance calculator on that, you're well over $200,000. And I would say the number one driving factor in what an auto insurance claim will settle for is the medical bills, how much medical bills that people have. And I can tell you that medical costs were a lot lower in 1975 than they were today. So what happens is today, you get a lot of folks who end up not getting compensated when they're injured in a collision, because the auto insurance right now, minimum, is so low. And if people are driving under these cheap policies, the insurance company will only pay $25,000. Another big impact that this has is that it affects Medicaid. And some of you might ask, why would it affect Medicaid? Every time somebody's injured in a collision, and they get their healthcare from Medicaid, Medicaid has a lien back against the auto insurance proceeds. And so if there's only $25,000 to recover, then Medicaid can only get up to that 25. But if there's 50, then Medicaid might be able to get more money back to save all taxpayers on their Medicaid expenses, and have the people who caused these collisions end up paying for it a little more. But, in case anybody's a little worried about affordability, I would just note for you that when queried in the Senate Transportation Committee about what expected premium increase we could see by pushing the auto insurance minimum from $25,000 to $50,000, the representatives there said we could look to maybe about an average of $112 a year, or about $9 a month. I also, by the way, just for, just for giggles, I had somebody who's an insurance agent run a policy quote today off a person, and they quoted an individual at $25,000 minimum with $25,000 of property damage, and then ran it at $50,000 minimum with $50,000 in property damage. The insurance premium under the bare minimum policy was $114.82 for six months. The premium for $50,000 minimum with $40,000 property damage was $140.66 a month. In other words, a $60 per year increase. So by paying an extra $60 a year, you double the amount of insurance that's available in these situations. This bill is not going to turn the world upside down, it'll, it'll bring us up to probably the top tier of states, there's two states that are $50,000, there's two at $30,000 minimum, this will put us at 35. But this is way, 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 way overdue, it needs to change, and I would hope the body would pass the bill.
For what purpose is the senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove, rise?
Speak to the bill.
Senators, the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, I hope you look at what we're doing here, we are raising the policy limits, and this is going to hurt the poorest of the poor Virginians. You know, fine, $60, you know, a year, $112 a year, may not sound like a lot of money to some people, but to other people, it sounds like a whole lot of money. The other thing that's worrisome about this, thank, you know, thank goodness, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, okay? But this, it looks to me like this is one of these attorney protection laws. When I asked if the contingency fees were going to be increased if they were awarded $35,000, the answer was, of course, yeah. So DMV had not recommended that these rates rise, they apparently did a study, and they found that the rates were good enough. I just hope we'll look at this and try to think about our poorest constituents and what this will do to affect them. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, President.
Thank the senator, for what purpose, Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden, rise.
Rise to briefly address the bill.
Senators, the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this did come before our, in front of my committee, and Senator Cosgrove is exactly right, DMV did a study and said we were right where we needed to be. We were right in the upper tier where most, everybody was, and, you know, to be honest with you, it was the only time I've ever seen the attorneys on the Transportation Committee get excited. They, they kind of liked this, but it's apparently not necessary, where some statistics were given out by the insurance industry, that just about all of these things get settled for much lower figures than, than we think they do. This will hurt people at the lower end of things, people get these lower levels of insurance for a reason, it's what they can afford. And if there's no compelling reason to do that, I think we have to back, you know, we ask for an awful lot of studies around here, and when we ask for a study and it tells us we don't need to do something, then we should and ought to do it. And I think this was a well-done study, I think the, the arguments about, you know, the CPI and the need to increase this, just apparently are not there based on the science, and I would urge us to vote against the bill.
Thank the senator, for what purpose, the senior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Chase, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President, I rise to speak against this bill, please.
Senators, the floor.
Mr. President, while I respect the intentions of the patron of this bill, I know this bill has come up before the Transportation Committee on a number of occasions, and I'd just politely remind him that this affects small business as well. If you have a small business like the one my boys, the Chase boys have, this greatly affects their cost of doing business. Those of us who have a number of kids that are driving right now, I know I have four in my household, I know there are a lot of people, a lot of Virginians, that are interested in how this is going to affect the bottom line for their family and expenditures in their household. Many of you have teenagers, and I know you don't want your rates to go up for your kids, because you're going to be paying for it out of pocket as well. While I appreciate the intentions, I ask that we vote no on this bill, thank you.
Thank the senator, for what purpose, Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson, rise.
Speak to the bill.
Senators, the floor.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, my only regret is this bill doesn't go higher, and let me tell you why. This has nothing to do with trial attorneys, this has to do with compensating people that in a lot of cases are going to get no other recovery. And let me tell you why this is relevant. A few years ago, I represented a family, had a young boy, teenager, who was driving home from a youth group. He was in a car, young lady was driving, she was a teenager, shouldn't have had that many kids in the car, turned in front of another car, it was hit, he was permanently paralyzed. The policy on that vehicle is a $25,000 policy, and he'll spend the rest of his life on Medicaid. Now, we were able to pull down that policy, we were able to set it aside, there was a Medicaid lien, I was able to work something out with DMAS, so he could come away with literally pennies. Now, if you think that's how we make money as trial attorneys, you are kidding yourself, okay? Nobody's making money off these claims. It's a matter of having a minimal amount of recovery for people, oftentimes in catastrophic accidents. Most of the time, this will get picked up on a UM, an uninsured motorist or underinsured motorist's policy, but the bottom line is, these are the absolute minimum you can recover for catastrophic injuries, and the rest of the money, you know where it's going to come from? It's coming right out of the state budget through DMAS. So y'all want a nickel and dime, go ahead and nickel and dime, because you're going to write a check up on the eighth floor, wherever finance is, I'll find it one of these days. So this is not a question of cheating people out of $60 a year, it's a question of making sure people that cause accidents are responsible for those accidents, and the insurance companies were in the best position to apportion this risk to do that, so I ask that you vote for this bill, thank you.
Thank the senator, for what purpose, Senator from Brotono City, Senator Edwards, rise.
Mr. President, what I'm hearing from the opposition here is that $25,000 in 1975 is still $25,000 in value in 2020, 45 years later. How much inflation has there been? This goes from $25,000 coverage to $35,000 coverage, $10,000 in 45 years. Are you kidding? Just do some math when it comes to inflation. This is a minimal bill, it should, ought to be a lot higher. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator, do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 664? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 664 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-one, knows eight, Rule 36-1.
Ayes, thirty-one, knows eight, Rule 36-1. Senate Bill 664 passes.
Senate Bill 923, a bill relating to motion picture production tax credit.
Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move the bill pass.
Senators, the floor.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, and I can't, can this go by for a moment, please?
Without objection, Senate Bill 923 can go by temporarily.
Thank you.
Senate Bill 995, a bill relating to the Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority labor organizations.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move the bill pass, and speaking to the bill.
Senators, the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, this bill is a small PLA bill, it basically just repeals the 14th enactment clause off the bill that passed, I think, two years ago, which prohibits the Washington Metropolitan Airport Authority from using PLAs. Doesn't require anything, it just repeals that restriction. The first segment of the Silver Line was built with a PLA, went a little bit over budget, but came in on time, and actually came in, I think, ahead of schedule. Segment two has been a little bit different experience, but Womata would like this authority, Maryland and DC don't require it, and I would hope we could pass this bill.
Thank the senator, do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 995? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 995 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, twenty-one, knows nineteen.
Ayes, twenty-one, knows nineteen. Senate Bill 995 passes.
Senate Bill 1035, a bill relating to motor vehicle dealers, motorcycle franchises.
Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Distel.
Thank you, Mr. President, speaking to the bill.
Thank the senator, you have the floor.
Senate Bill 1035 corrects a technical error in the law regarding relevant market area for purposes of motorcycle franchises, and ensures that the burden is properly placed on the out-of-state manufacturer when disputes arise with the Virginia franchise holders. This legislation would bring the definition of relevant market area for motorcycle dealers into conformity with that is used by automobile dealers. This legislation is necessary to ensure that relevant market areas does not prevent a long-term, well-established franchise holder from being penalized due to the wording of the Virginia law. Thank you. With that, I move Senate Bill 1035 pass.
Thank the senator, do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 1035? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 1035 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, forty, no, zero.
Ayes, forty, no, zero. Senate Bill 1035 passes.
Returning to Senate Bill 923. Returning to Senate Bill 923.
Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move that the bill pass.
Senator has the floor.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, as American manufacturing industries have moved offshore and middle-class jobs have become harder to find, competition to attract the $1 trillion content manufacturing industry is fierce. It's now recognized as a business that uniquely touches technology, tourism, and traditional economic development while stimulating providing high-wage career paths and our great interest to our emergency workforce. The industry uniquely creates manufacturing jobs that create, that cannot be replaced throughout, through automation, and, Mr. President, is the reason for the request for the tax credit, and I again renew my motion that the bill pass.
Thank you. Senator, do any other senators wish to be heard regarding Senate Bill 923? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 923 pass? All in favor, the most will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 36, no's 4.
Ayes, 36, no's 4. Senate Bill 923 passes.
Uncontested calendar, Senate bills on second reading.
Senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
I move that all Senate bills on second reading on the uncontested calendar, pages 24 through 28, that's Senate Bill 378 through 1002, 2002, be advanced to their engrossment and third reading in a block after the adoption of any amendments thereto. Any senator desiring to move a bill from the block, please do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill.
Thank you. Senator, the question is, shall all Senate bills on second reading on the uncontested calendar and pages 24 through 28, Senate Bill 378 through Senate Bill 1002 be engrossed in advance to their third reading in the block after the adoption of any amendments thereto, and that any senator desiring to remove a bill from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill. All in favor, the most will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the motion is agreed to. The clerk will read the number of the bills.
Senate Bill 378, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary with a substitute.
Senator from Loudoun, Senator Bell.
Mr. President, move the committee substitute.
Thank you, Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the most will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill 440, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary. Senate Bill 541, reported from the Committee on Local Government. Senate Bill 602, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary. Senate Bill 603, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary with amendments.
Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the committee amendments be adopted.
Thank you, Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be adopted? All in favor, the most will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the committee amendments are adopted.
Senate Bill 670, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary. Senate Bill 683, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary. Senate Bill 840, reported from the Committee on Judiciary with a substitute.
Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt the committee substitute.
Thank you, Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the most will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill 870, reported from the Committee on Local Government with a substitute.
Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank you, Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the most will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the committee substitute is agreed to.
Senate Bill 875, reported from the Committee on Local Government with a substitute.
Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank you, Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the most will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the committee substitute is agreed to.
Senate Bill 1002, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary.
Question is, shall the Senate bills be engrossed in advance to their third reading? All in favor, the most will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the bills are engrossed in advance to their third reading.
Regular calendar, Senate bills on second reading. Senate Bill 253, a bill relating to deeds of trust, fiduciary duties, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary with a substitute, and there are two-floor amendments.
Senator from Russell, Senator Chafin.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Senator.
So I want to speak in favor of the substitute, the committee substitute, and I need to tell you a little bit of background about this bill. This bill came, I'm going to move the substitute first, the committee substitute, and speaking in favor of that.
Senator has the floor.
So this bill came as a result of a Supreme Court decision, Crosby versus ALG trustees, and that decision is a little more than a year old. It was back in December of 2018. And I need to give a little bit of reference for everybody to understand what this is about. So at that time, there was a suit, and in that suit, Mr. President, there was a decision for the, there was a decision by the court which sort of turned the real estate lawyers and the bankers on their head. And as a consequence of that, this bill came about. And we worked with the parties in this bill to put the rules back as the real estate lawyers, I've done this work for over 30 years, as we understood it. And the amendments that you see here that make up the substitute are as a consequence of working with the parties and trying to satisfy everybody. And basically, what we said was that the terms of the deed of trust, which are offered by the creditor, by the bank, and accepted and signed by the debtors, that those terms of the deed of trust, as long as the trustee complies with those terms, and as long as the trustee also complies with the articles of the code, that the trustee has done what they are supposed to do. The substitute does recognize that there are fiduciary duties on the part of the trustee for the trustee to also recognize that they have a fiduciary duty to both the debtor and to the creditor. And as a trustee, for my own law form, I've always known that there was this type of fiduciary duty, and that you needed to be impartial, and you needed to be fair. But at the end of the day, Mr. President, you also needed to have some finality, some something, some language in the deed of trust and in state law that you could follow that would allow the execution of that deed of trust to go forward. I hope it'll be the pleasure of the body to allow the committee substitute.
Thank you. Senator, for what purpose, Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson, rise?
Mr. President, I have an amendment that's drawn to the substitute, so I want to speak to my floor amendment once the substitute is adopted.
Thank you, Senator. Question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the most will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the committee substitute is adopted. Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a floor amendment drawn to Senate Bill 253, which is the substitute now before us, and I guess I would move to waive the reading of the floor amendment. I'm very good at the hand gestures. Move to waive the reading.
Thank you, Senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor amendments be waived? All in favor, waiving the reading will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes, seven, the reading of the floor amendments is waived. Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, Senator, I hope you listen closely, and I want to thank my good friend Senator Chafin, who has done a great job of explaining the creditor's side of this issue. Let me now explain the debtor's side of this issue. A trustee is what is appointed by a deed of trust, and that's typically when the deed is held in lieu by the bank after you have obtained a mortgage to buy a property, whether it's commercial or residential. And if you fall behind in payments and you go to foreclosure, that trustee then becomes the master of your life in a lot of ways. In other words, they have the actual deed, and they have obligations to market it, they have obligations to advertise it, and if necessary, sell it on the courthouse steps. And as a debtor, you are basically beholden to that person, you lose all ownership rights in the property, you have certain statutory rights such as right of redemption, but for the most part, you are essentially helpless in this transaction, and your most valuable asset in life, which is to say your home, is now being sold, and oftentimes, the equity, which is all the wealth that you have, is going to go with it. The Crosby decision was very important, because what it said was, the Virginia Supreme Court said, there are common law duties, a duty of fairness, a duty of neutrality, a fiduciary duty that a trustee owes to the debtor. In other words, while they are employed by the bank, while the trustee is put in that place by the bank under the deed of trust instrument, they still owe duties to the debtor. Now, why is that important? Because when you have a piece of property that's being marketed, oftentimes, there's a lot of contested issues. For example, accurately computing what's due and owing under the note, how much has been paid, are attorney's fees owed, are expert costs owed, is compounding interest owed? These are amounts that will deal with the right of redemption, which is whether or not you can buy back your house, whether or not there's going to be competitive bidding on the property. A lot of these properties go to foreclosure, and guess who buys them? The bank, the creditor. Is there going to be competitive bidding? Thirdly, are they trying to maximize the price? So if you do go to foreclosure, and sometimes it happens, as an attorney, I've been on both sides of this issue, is the debtor being protected so at least the value at foreclosure is going to help retire that debt? All of these are critical questions. A deed of trust instrument is drafted by a bank. It is drafted for the benefit of the bank. It gives the absolute minimum standard. What the Supreme Court said in an opinion that I agree with is that, no, there are also the same common law duties that a fiduciary has to someone that basically they are looking out for. And so I would ask that you accept my amendment, which simply adds the words "and" to Virginia law, and the critical reason is that would incorporate the Crosby decision, which is the decision which I think was a very good decision that protects debtors in this most vulnerable point in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator, for what purpose, Senator from Russell, Senator Chafin, rise?
Mr. President, I rise to speak against the floor amendment.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the body, my good friend, Senator Peterson, what his floor amendment does is it guts this bill, okay? It takes this bill and says it's of no consequence, and in fact, it makes it worse than just being a bill. It codifies the decision of the Supreme Court. And I know that Senator Peterson knows that, and as do I. So we take this bad decision that every real estate lawyer I know, okay, in the Commonwealth that does bank closings, does bank work, the banking industry as we know it feels like this turned the industry on its head, and suddenly, we put that in the code. Now, I'm happy for this bill to be voted on up or down, but it'll never get voted on up or down if you pass this amendment. The truth is, it won't get voted on up or down. So what, you know, all that I am asking for is that the committee substitutes go forward, because if we want Virginia to continue to have a strong financial sector and a strong banking sector, it's imperative, it is imperative, that the duties and obligations of the parties, the contract that the parties sign, the contract that everybody agrees to be enforced and be allowed to be enforced. This bill says there are these fiduciary duties, these common law duties. It recognizes them, and certainly, the people that work within the area know that we recognize them. But what the bill goes on further to say is, as long as we recognize these duties and we also follow the terms of the deed of trust and the terms of the state law, then the foreclosure is allowed to go forward. That's always been the law in this Commonwealth. That's always been the law, and it ought to be the law after today. I hope that you'll vote against the floor amendment.
For what purpose, Senator from Roanoke City, Senator Edwards, rise?
Mr. President, speaking in favor of the floor amendment.
Senator has the floor.
And against the bill. If the floor amendment doesn't pass, I would hope we would vote against the bill. Here's the reason. I've done litigation in this area involving a trustee of a deed of trust selling property at a foreclosure sale, and the trustee's duties are not just what is written in the deed of trust. They're common law duties, as been mentioned. And what this substitute does, or this line amendment does, is add Virginia law, other common law responsibilities of the fiduciary who is the trustee. The trustee has broad fiduciary responsibilities to the debtor as well as to the creditor, and I'll give you just one example. Suppose the trustee sells the property for an unreasonably low price that can be proven in court. The trustee, the deed of trust doesn't say what the price should be, and you would have no common law ability to go to court and say the trustee, the fiduciary, sold the property for an unreasonably low price, and the equity was destroyed. That defeats the rights of the debtor and the equity to the property. That's just one example. Okay, on and on and on. Again, the deed of trust is a trust instrument, and there are common law responsibilities to be a fiduciary to all the parties, an independent fiduciary. What this does, it guts that, and I would hope you would at least vote for the amendment. If you don't vote for amendment and the bill comes before the body, I would hope we defeat the bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Senator, for what purpose, Senator from James City County, Senator Normat, rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to speak to the amendment.
Senator has the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think those of you who are blessed to not be attorneys may have your eyes glazed over as you hear the explanations of this, but basically, what we are doing is dealing with a foreclosure situation where the homeowners have not paid their mortgages. And my experience is generally that's about a minimum of four months before any foreclosure proceedings are initiated. And I would say, over the years, I have done literally thousands of foreclosures, but a number of years ago, I took another position, and there is another firewall of protection that is there, and that firewall is in an independent fiduciary relationship. That individual is not an agent or extension of the mortgage company that is seeking the foreclosure, and is not an agent or representative of the homeowner, debtor. It is the commissioner of accounts. And in the Commonwealth of Virginia, every foreclosure proceeding is submitted to a commissioner of accounts who is appointed by the circuit court judges to do a number of things. One of the things that that commissioner of accounts' job is to review each and every foreclosure, and the commissioner is supposed to determine whether or not that foreclosure is worthy of the certification and approval of the commissioner of accounts. I have a little different experience than the senator from Roanoke about going to court. He raised the question about what happens if the property is sold at a ridiculously low value. Here's what happens. The commissioner of accounts refuses to approve the foreclosure, and I literally have taken the trustees before the circuit court judge, asking the court to confirm the rejection of the foreclosure because an unfair and unreasonable amount was bid on the property, and the trustee tried to accept it. The commissioner of account has a fiduciary relationship, an independent fiduciary relationship with both the debtor and with both the mortgage holder. And I suggest to you that on more than one occasion, I have had the courts back the commissioner of accounts and reject that sale as being unreasonable, and force them to re-advertise it at a higher price. So you've got a debtor, you've got a bank, but you also have a commissioner of accounts.
For what purpose is the junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey, rise?
Good afternoon, Mr. President.
Good afternoon, Senator.
The senator from Russell County yield for a question.
Well, Senator Yield. Senator Yield, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I would ask the gentleman, and I enjoyed listening to the dialogue between him and the patron of this amendment, and I was trying to learn something. Can you tell the body why you would not want the language Virginia law, which just incorporates starry decisis into this bill so that the homeowner, the debtor, would be protected by the ruling of that 2018 Supreme Court case? Why would that be a bad thing to incorporate the language Virginia case law in this bill?
Senator has the floor.
So, Mr. President, I've looked at that decision of the Supreme Court. So, Mr. President, I've looked at that decision of the Supreme Court carefully. I've known about it since it was made, and I would tell the senator from Petersburg that I, or from Petersburg?
Richmond City.
Richmond City. I apologize to the senator from Richmond City. And I would tell the gentleman that that decision does not articulate a particular reason that the fiduciary duties were violated, okay? It does not give a particular way for the trustee to protect themselves, and that is why this bill is being brought forward. I tend to agree that these fiduciary obligations do exist, and everybody who works in this field either should or does know about it, that they do exist, and in my experience, they certainly try to follow those obligations because they want to get as much for both the debtor and the creditor that they can get through the selling, the execution of the trust instrument through the selling of the property.
Mr. President, would the gentleman yield for another question?
Senator Yield?
I yield.
Senator Yield, you have the floor.
I'd ask the senator this final question. The language that Senator Peterson wants to insert on line 57 and Virginia law, that would not only include the 2018 Supreme Court decision that both of you were speaking about, but any other decision by the either Court of Record or the Court of Appeals or the Supreme Court, correct?
Senator, it's the floor.
Mr. President, I would say that that language would seek to place in the code common law, as well as any former prior decisions, which a practitioner may or may not be aware of.
Further question?
I thank the gentleman. Mr. President, would the senator from James City yield for a question?
Senator Yield?
Mr. President, I'd be delighted to.
Senator Yield, you have the floor.
I would ask the gentleman from James City, you talked about or spoke of a firewall where the commissioner of revenue could examine a sale, a foreclosure sale, and glean from that that maybe the house was sold at a very low value, thereby there to the detriment of the debtor or the homeowner. My question would be, how often is it that the commissioner of revenue reviews a transaction with that type of scrutiny that you described, and how often is that sale vitiated or negated because the commissioner of revenue, who was doing due diligence, saw some mischief?
Senator, it's the floor.
Mr. President, I would respond, and I'm not being snarky. First of all, the commissioner of revenue never reviews it. The commissioner of accounts reviews it. And as I said, the commissioner of account is actually an extension of the judicial authority of the circuit courts. I would say, Mr. President, I can only speak for myself. I scrutinize every one of them. And on the foreclosure report, one of the required disclosures is, what is the current tax value of the property? Now, I appreciate there may be a variance sometimes between the fair market and the tax value, but at least that is a constant within that particular jurisdiction. Also, on the foreclosure accounting report, the balance on the mortgage must be reflected. All delinquencies and taxes and other unpaid fees must be disclosed. And so I go through and I audit it, and I look at that tax value, and if I see, one, who the purchaser is, and in many instances, I will acknowledge it is the lending institution. But I see that there is a significant variance between the tax value, the mortgage, I look at the balance on the mortgage, and that the sales price is dramatically under either of those. That is immediately a red flag to me to make inquiry, and that's when I have my auditing staff look into it further. And when, Mr. President, when I say look into it further, they may check with the local jurisdiction on the tax assessments, they might check with local realtors to determine whether or not that is a gross inadequate amount that is bid. And if I independently, as a commissioner of accounts, come to that conclusion, I reject the accounting on the foreclosure sale, and I give the trustee one of two choices. You may file a lawsuit on it, or I will set a hearing up before the circuit court judge, and we will see whether or not the circuit court judge reaffirms my rejection of that foreclosure sale as being significantly inadequate and constituting a gross unfair situation for the homeowner.
Would the gentleman yield for a final question?
Senator Yield?
I'll be happy to, sir.
Senator Yield, you have the floor.
Notwithstanding the due diligence that the gentleman gives to every foreclosure, would you agree that the average number of cases that are reviewed by commissioner of accounts with foreclosure sales are less than 1%?
Senator, it's the floor.
Mr. President, I can only speak from my personal experience, and I do 100% of them. What I do know, Mr. President, is that the commissioner of accounts actually have an association and a website where we exchange information. In other words, if you come across an unusual situation, you can put it out on the web and get the benefit of other experienced commissioners of account. I could not fathom a situation where only 1% of foreclosures are reviewed by a commissioner of accounts. Mr. President, I would say, and gosh, I'll probably get barraged tonight, but I would consider that an abdication of our responsibility.
Mr. President, I said that would be the last question. Would the gentleman, though, yield for one final question?
Senator Yield?
Mr. President, I would yield because I've learned in this business, sometimes there are no last questions.
Senator Yield, you have the floor.
I misspoke when I said earlier about reviewed. I meant reviewed and rejected. Would you agree that the percentage of cases that are reviewed and rejected by the commissioner of accounts is less than 1%?
Senator, it's the floor.
Mr. President, I thank the gentleman for clarifying his question because I don't believe that the second part of it was part of the earlier question. I would agree with the gentleman, Mr. President, that a very modest percentage of the trustee's sales on foreclosure properties are rejected.
I thank the gentleman, Mr. President.
Senator, for what purpose, Senator from Northern Chesapeake, Senator Spruill, rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. Speaking to the amendment.
Senator, it's the floor.
Mr. President, I was sitting here listening, and I noticed all lawyers are talking. You've got Democrats, you've got Republicans. I'm sitting here writing down, and I asked my lawyer seatmate, what is the commissioner of account? Then I've watched my friend, Chad Peterson, I watched my friend, Senator Norman, talk. And I said to myself, you got Democrats, Republicans arguing over money, that what they can make, and we not gonna make that one dime. So I'm saying, so now, I'm trying to figure out, how should those of us in here who are not lawyers, how should we vote on this amendment of substitutes? Someone tell me. So the majority of, Mr. President, in here, we are not lawyers. So we can outnumber all these lawyers, either side. That's what we should do. Because I'm really trying to understand, and I enjoy what they were talking about. I enjoyed it, you know, but I'm trying to understand, I'm asking a question, what does that mean? What does that mean? And I'm gonna vote on some, I don't know what the heck it means. So I'm suggesting that if they came looking out, those of us who are not lawyers, let's kill all this stuff. Thank you so much.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson, rise?
Well, if no one desires to speak twice, I'm gonna answer my colleague's question.
We'll come back to Senator Chafin at the end, but if you want to speak...
It's my amendment, so do I get the last word?
Do I have the last word? Does the senator want to be heard? Senator from Russell, Senator Chafin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I do want to be heard, so...
Senator, it's the floor.
The senator from Chesapeake should vote against this amendment. I will say that, Mr. President, this floor amendment, if he's asking that question. And I'll tell you why. There has to be some certainty in regard to the way that a foreclosure occurs. And I will tell you, Mr. President, in my experience of having done real estate work for more than 34 years, it's the happiest day for a purchaser in their life, other than having children, when they buy their home, okay? It's a happy day, and it's a happy thing to participate in that as a lawyer and to close that loan with them, and to see them acquire the home of their dreams or their home and have that home, and they hope in perpetuity for the rest of their lives. And it's a very sad day, Mr. President, when, for whatever myriad of reasons, they fall behind in their obligations that they've agreed to, if that happens, and they get behind, and I associate myself with the comments of Senator Norman, that it takes at least four months before this ever gets to this point, when you're working with a financial institution, and you're trying, everybody's trying their best to try to make this foreclosure ultimately not occur. But, Mr. President, the truth is, there are regulators out there that are both federal and state, and they are going to tell the banks, and they are going to tell those who are interested, what they can and cannot do, and that they must, in fact, enforce the contracts that they have with the customers that they have, and that they must recover the monies that they have loaned out, and that these loans cannot sit idly on their books and be in past due and not be scrutinized. So it is that day that comes, and the trustee has the obligation of looking at his duties, and he has the obligation of looking at the deed of trust and looking at what's on the books, the state law, to direct the trustee on how he is to advertise that property, to direct the trustee on how he is to prepare the documents, to direct the trustee on what he is to do to try to sell this property so that the trustee can reach the best results for both the debtor and the creditor, because they have a common interest, trying to get the highest yield of that property that is going into foreclosure, Mr. President. So it simply defies logic, I would say, Mr. President, if we are to say that there are these fiduciary obligations out there that the trustee must follow, okay, and put them into the code when they are not clearly articulated or clearly spelled out by the Supreme Court. So what we have here is a situation where those trial lawyers that like to do one thing, sue. They like to sue, and they like to bring suits in order to overturn the results of executed deeds of trust. Now, Mr. President, all I can say to this body is, Virginia has a sound financial credit system, and the day that we get to in the Commonwealth of Virginia, when a deed of trust cannot be executed through a foreclosure with some degree of finality, with some degree of finality, Mr. President, that day will be the day that we will all rue, because that day will be the day that our credit system is in chaos. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators other than Senator Peterson wish to be heard regarding the floor amendments? Seeing none, call the senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna make my closing argument. I'm gonna do it in 60 seconds. Three reasons. This Supreme Court opinion was, came down in 2018, okay? The sun rose in the east and it set in the west. The real estate market was not adversely impacted. Everybody went on about their business. Life is gonna be fine if we keep this Supreme Court precedent, number one. Number two, it's not often I rise to praise the Supreme Court for a pro-consumer decision. This is one of those times. This was a good decision. It established common law duties that we have had, and we've understood as attorneys for three years. Three, Senator Spruill asked why this is relevant to him as a non-attorney. There may come a day where life gives you a setback. Maybe it's a residential deed of trust, maybe it's a commercial deed of trust, and it goes upside down. You gotta decide, do you want me going to the courthouse and saving you, or you want that file in Senator Norman's desk a year later, okay? You have to make that decision. At what point do you have a chance to save yourself? And you got a chance to save yourself under the existing law. We need to keep this law. We should not let it be wiped out by rejecting this amendment. Thank you.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the floor amendments be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. The floor amendments are adopted.
Eight hands.
Seeing at least eight hands, we'll now have a recorded vote. Question is, shall the floor amendments be adopted? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, 20 knows 20.
Ayes, 20 knows 20. The chair votes aye. The floor amendments are adopted. Senator from Russell, Senator Chafin.
Mr. President, I move that the bill go by for the day.
Without objection. Senate Bill 253 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 571, a bill relating to visitation, petition of grandparents of deceased parent. We have three floor substitutes.
Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe that the authors of the first two floor substitutes wish to strike them.
Junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey.
Mr. President, that's correct. I move to withdraw my floor amendment that was filed two days ago.
Thank the senator. Without objection, Senator's floor substitute will be withdrawn. Senator from Roanoke City, Senator Edwards.
Mr. President, I withdraw my floor amendment as well, in lieu of Senator Donovan's more comprehensive floor amendment.
Thank the senator. Without objection, Senator Edwards' floor substitute will be withdrawn. Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move the third floor substitute and waive the reading.
Question is, should the reading of the floor substitute be waived? All in favor, waiving the reading, will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the reading of the floor substitute is waived. Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Now, I would move that we adopt that floor substitute and speak to that, Mr. President.
Senator, it's the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill seeks to change the considerations a judge can consider, the different issues a judge can consider when looking at grandparent rights for visitation only. We're not talking about custody. There was conversation about custody and how constitutionally this couldn't be done, but that doesn't, this bill doesn't address that. It addresses visitation. The bill in its original form was submitted to address the case of a grandparent seeking visitation when their child had died, and they wanted to establish or continue visitation with the grandchildren. When this bill came up in committee, there was quite a lot of experience in the judiciary committee of other instances where grandparents had not been allowed visitation. Now, I want to point out that right now in Virginia, the criteria is that you have to prove not having visitation is detrimental to the child. These are just other things a judge can consider, which is the historical relationship, the motivation. It doesn't mandate that visitation happen. But the other instances that this amendment speaks to, of where grandparents would have the opportunity to perhaps find a ruling in their favor, would be other times that the parent was not involved in the child's life. So those are specifically, if the child is deceased, incarcerated, incapacitated, or has had their parental rights terminated, or if the grandparent has established a relationship with the child and has provided a significant level of care. And all of those things would be considered for visitation for grandparents. So those are the amendments. I move that you accept the amendments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Russell, Senator Chafin, rise? For what purpose, Senator from Russell, Senator Chaffin, rise.
Mr. President, I wish to speak to the, to the, the bill itself. Yes, no, I don't wish to speak right now, I apologize.
Okay, no worries. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding the floor substitute? Seeing none, the question is, shall the floor substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the floor substitute is adopted. The Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we engross the bill and advance it to its third constitutional reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed and advanced to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the bill is engrossed and advanced to its third reading.
Senate Bill 868, a bill relating to prohibited discrimination, public accommodations, employment, housing, and credit, causes of action, sexual orientation, and gender identity. Reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology with a substitute, and there are floor amendments.
Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
The, I'm sorry, the, I thought there was a floor amendment, but the, I move the committee substitute to the bill.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is adopted. Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Peake.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I move that the floor, that the reading of the floor amendment be waived.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor amendments be waived? All in favor, waiving the reading will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the reading of the floor amendments is waived. Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Peake.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I move that the floor amendments be agreed to, and speaking to the amendments.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've talked to the patron about these amendments that I have to his bill. These amendments were brought to me by the Catholic Foundation and several other religious entities that had just a, a slight change that they would like to make to the senator's bill. The way the, the bill reads now, they are afraid that it does not protect them in certain situations, and the most frequently one that they mentioned is what they do in the case of, of gay marriage, and that is the one that concerns them the most. The, the way the bill is written now, if gay marriage happens to be against their principles of a religion, they're afraid that the bill now would not protect them. Several instances are, they would not be able to provide for housing, or, or to, they would like to not provide housing to gay couples, it would be against their religion, that concerns them. If they hire teachers from other faiths who then violated their religious tenets, they would not be able to terminate those people, and in response to public accommodation, part of this bill, if they are open to the public, they would not be free to limit programs to people of their own faith. So those are the, the main concerns that they have with the bill as it is written. These amendments would take care of those concerns, their amendments are consistent with what is done in New York and in New Jersey, and, and looking, and so that is the purpose of the amendments, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, the junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey, rise.
I rise to the purpose of an inquiry. Mr. President, Madam Clerk, are we considering these amendments in a block, or we, or will we be considering them one after the other?
Presently considering them in a block, but there could be a motion to do them one by one.
Mr. President, I'd ask that these amendments be considered individually.
Okay, we now have a substitute motion. Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Peake, wish to be heard regarding the motion.
If that is how the Senator, Junior Senator from Richmond wants to do it, let's do it that way.
Okay, so no objection? So without objection, we will now consider each of the floor amendments one by one. Ready to do it? Okay. All right, there are nine total floor amendments, we will begin with floor amendment number one. The question is, shall floor amendment number one be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Mr. President?
For what purpose, Senator from Alexandria, Senator, Senator Eben, rise.
To address the amendment. I hope I don't have to, to rise nine times, but I'm just gonna speak in general at this point, and first off, I'm gonna ask my friend from Lynchburg if he's familiar with the Supreme Court case of Hosanna Taber versus the EEOC.
Senator Yield for a question?
Yes, I will.
Senator Yields.
And, no, I am not.
Okay, I would just tell the body, in terms of hiring, that all clergy who preach, whether they are music teachers, or priests, or reverends, or bishops, whoever they are, are granted, they're, they're considered ministerial people who have an exemption. And then, and further, these amendments are drawn much wider than what the gentleman described. No church in America is required to marry anyone, I don't think you see the Catholic Church marrying divorced people, there's lots of churches, lots that don't marry gay people, and this is not needed. But what this particularly does is it allows discrimination, and it allows discrimination in addition, on whatever basis the, the faith wants to discriminate on, it says as it deems necessary, in two of the amendments, the meatier ones. And it also, at the same time, would allow them to discriminate in the portions of the new code or the existing code above there, which includes veteran status, race, national, national origin, et cetera. So this doesn't say that you don't have to marry people, it doesn't say you don't have to hire people, and in fact, with the employment exemption, I'm assuming that we're worried about having protections for gay people, not the others, but with the, with the employment portion, you can limit the employment, a church can, to co-religionists today. If a, if a religious or parochial school wants to hire only people of one religion, that's fine, but then later, if they decide to hire a Jewish person, they can't then turn away a Muslim from teaching English just because they're a Muslim. That's what the bill is about. The bill is a nondiscrimination bill, and by seeking in nine different ways, nine ways, or however many ways there are in here, to alter the bill, what we're really doing is watering the bill down, in New York and New Jersey, I believe that was 10 or 12 years ago, I don't know if that was before they had marriage equality or not, but I guess it was before, but I, I don't know of any Catholic Church in this country forced to marry a gay person. And that's, with that, I move the amendment be defeated.
For what purpose, Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna speak to these as sort of, as a block, I know that they're taking sort of ad-sariatum, but if, with the leave of the president, I'll speak to them in a block. I took a close look at this legislation, and for those of you that neither know nor care, I attend a fairly conservative church, and I respect the theology of what I believe is revealed in the Bible, and that's a decision for me and my family. These are state laws and secular laws that we're passing, and yes, we give discretion to religious institutions, absolutely, they need to hire the people they think are correct, but, but I do think that those protections are in the bill as it is right now. And I'm, I'm looking at some of this language that, at least in some of the, the paragraph, at least at the end, it appears to be very open-ended beyond just what is necessary to maintain your religious freedom under either Virginia, First Amendment, the Virginia statute of religious freedom. I thought the authors of the legislation did a pretty good job, frankly, better than I expected, protecting religious freedom in this bill. I think the bill's actually a pretty good piece of work, so I'm speaking generally, not specifically, and maybe we can go through these item by item, but as one who usually tends to err on the side of religious liberty, I think the bill's actually in pretty good shape right now. So I'd speak against the amendments.
Thank the senator. For what purposes, the junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey, rise.
What was the question that the, the president asked?
Sorry, Senator was buzzed in, that's the only reason I, I wanted to, I don't know if you want to speak to the floor amendment.
I withdraw my request to speak, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding floor amendment number one? For what purpose, Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Peake, rise.
I was, and actually, if I may inquire if the junior senator from the city of Richmond would yield that we could reconsider that motion, handle these as a block.
Well, do you want to ask him a question, or do you want to make a substitute motion?
I would make a substitute motion, that instead of going through line by line, I think people know where we stand on these, people have spoken as a block, let's go ahead and take this up as a block, so we can get out of here sometime this evening.
Mr. President, I respond by asking that items number five and items, item number nine, and I believe, and item eight be taken out of the block and be considered individually.
Okay.
So that's item five, five and nine be taken out of the block and be considered individually. The others, one, two, three, four, six, seven, and eight, may be considered in a block.
Okay, so we now have another substitute motion. Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Peake, would you, do you wish to withdraw your request?
I will withdraw my request, yes.
Okay, so that's withdrawn. The current motion, without objection, is to have amendments five and nine be removed from the block, and to consider amendments one, two, three, four, six, seven, and eight as a block. So why don't we do it this way? We'll first do a motion and a vote on the amendments in a block, okay? Then we'll take the other two afterwards. So the current motion is to agree to the floor amendments numbers one, two, three, four, six, seven, and eight. The question is, shall those floor amendments be agreed to in a block? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the floor amendments are agreed to in the block. Seeing at least eight hands, we will now have a recorded vote. Question is, shall floor amendments one, two, three, four?
Mr. President?
For what purposes, the junior senator from Richmond City?
I rise for the purpose of an inquiry. Because I'm hearing different comments around me, if you may, I would ask the following. If you are opposed to one, two, three, four, six, seven, and eight, would you not vote nay on this upcoming vote?
You, that's a double negative.
Yeah, would you vote?
You would, if you are opposed to those amendments, you would vote nay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, if you support them, you would vote yea. Okay, we are now gonna have a recorded vote, seeing eight hands, so the question is, shall the senator adopt floor amendments one, two, three, four, six, seven, and eight? For those in support of the motion, you will record your vote, aye. Those opposed, will record their vote, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes nineteen, knows twenty-one.
Ayes nineteen, knows twenty-one. Those floor amendments are not adopted. We will now take up floor amendments one by one, number five and number nine. We'll start with floor amendment number five. Question is, shall the Senate adopt floor amendment number five? All in favor, the motion. For what purpose, the junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey, rise.
Mr. President, would the gentleman from Lynchburg yield for a question?
Will the senator yield for a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask the gentleman that the amendment for item number five on line 297, if you, if I could direct him to that, is that item not superfluous, given that you have in line 296, educational, which we plot, which refers to a religious educational institution?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, and to the junior senator from the city of Richmond, it is my opinion that it is not superfluous, and that we need the additional language that we have in amendment number five to protect these individual groups, and, and speaking to that bill briefly, and then, I will answer the question first, but it's my belief that it is not superfluous, or I would not be offering it.
Would the gentleman yield for another question?
Senator Yields?
Yes, sir.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
Would the gentleman look at line 171, which in bold language sets, sets forth nondiscrimination in employment, and agree, and would he not agree that the amendment number five on 297 deals with, or should deal with, nondiscrimination in employment?
Senator has the floor.
Yes, I would point that 295 deals with employment of individuals of particular religion, religious corporation, association, educational institution, or society, as it is listed in E, and, and then the amendment at number five, or society, and allows it to take actions necessary to protect its religious principles.
Would the gentleman yield for another question?
To maintain and establish them, and so what was your question about line 171?
Certainly.
Senator Yields for another question, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the gentleman not agree that amendment number five, which uses language such action as it deems necessary to promote the religious principles, is far afield of the title of this particular section, which deals with nondiscrimination in employment?
Senator has the floor.
No, I do not, that is why I have offered the amendment.
Speaking to the amendment, Mr. President.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I preface my comments that I not only attended parochial schools, religious schools, and my children do, I believe that if you look at 296, you see that it clearly says that the provisions of this section do not apply to religious educational institutions. If you add this amendment in, which is far broader than, than employment, I believe that you devalue that entire section. Accordingly, I would ask that this body reject that amendment as not being consistent with what parochial or other religious institutions would want. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Peake.
Thank you, Mr. President, and speaking to the bill as the last, and I think, and to this amendment.
Senator can speak, the floor amendment number five, Senator has the floor.
Am I in order, I want to be in order. And I would like to address the Senator from, the patron of the bill, Senator from Arlington. He's, this is not about performing gay marriages, this has nothing to do with requiring them to perform gay marriages, this is for the institution of people that they hire of their faith or not of their faith, and then after they have entered into a gay marriage, if they have to keep them in employment, it also involves housing under the public accommodations portion of it, this, so this was, this, these provisions are not addressed as to whether or not we can make institutions perform those type of marriages. This protects the institutions, and I ask that the amendment pass.
Thank the senator. For what purposes, the senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President, speaking to the amendment.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Based on the patron of the amendment's comments, I would argue that his amendment is not necessary. The bill already provides reasonable exemptions for religiously affiliated organizations and institutions, as the junior senator from Richmond provided, but the Supreme Court has already created an exemption to nondiscrimination laws that it refers to as the ministerial exception. This exception applies to employees of religious organizations who perform particular job functions, and basically, the court has said that if you are, are singling out one particular, if you, if you are, right now I'm gonna get in trouble trying to explain this, but if you are hiring someone who is not of a particular religion, once you do that, then you can't pick and choose who you hire and who you don't. And you can have blanket exemptions that say you have a code of conduct, and you have to adhere to the code of conduct, but again, you can't pick and choose within a particular religious belief what you will fire based on, and what you won't. So I think the Supreme Court So I think the Supreme Court, through its jurisprudence on the First Amendment, has already cared for what this amendment attempts to provide. And I think it probably goes a little too far. It's unnecessary, and I think it could cause damage to the bill, and I'd ask that we reject the amendment.
The question is, shall floor amendment number five be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The noes have it. Floor amendment number five is rejected. Seeing at least eight hands, we will have a recorded vote. Question is, shall floor amendment number five be adopted? All in favor of the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes seventeen, noes twenty-three.
Ayes seventeen, noes twenty-three. Senate does not adopt floor amendment number five. Finally, moving on to floor amendment number nine. Senator from Lynchburg, Senator Pete.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. We have floor amendment number nine. I have a feeling that things are not going to change that much. I'll adopt my prior arguments and ask that we address number nine, which talks about public accommodations and what they can or can't do. I think I've already talked about it, so I would ask that the amendment pass.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall floor amendment number nine be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The noes have it. Floor amendment number nine is not adopted. Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
I think I forgot while I was here, while I was here today, sir. But I believe it's time to engross the bill, to adopt the committee, to adopt, okay.
Senator, you want to engross in advance?
Engross the, engross the committee, engross the bill and move it on to its third and final constitutional, constitutional reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 612, a bill to establish the Commission for Historical Statutes in the United States Capitol to provide for the replacement of the Robert E. Lee statue in the National Statuary Hall Collection at the United States Capitol.
Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move that the reading of the amendment, of the floor amendment be waived.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor substitute be waived? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no.
No.
The noes have it. The committee amendments are rejected. Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move that the reading of the amendment, of the floor amendment be waived.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor substitute be waived? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor substitute is waived. Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, what the floor substitute does is, well, of course, the bill establishes the Commission for Historical Statutes in the United States Capitol to determine whether the statue of Robert E. Lee should remain, this is should remain, or be replaced in the National Statutory Hall Collection representing the Commonwealth of Virginia. If the Commission determines that the Robert E. Lee statue should be replaced, of course, they will use George Washington, Robert E. Lee, and a host of other notable, more notable characters to be, to replace that statue. That's pretty much what it does, Mr. President. So again, I.
Remove the floor substitute.
I move approval of the floor substitute.
Thank the senator. For what purpose? Senator from Roanoke County, Senator Suterline, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Senator from Portsmouth, yield for a question?
Yes, sir, I'll be.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the senator for yielding. I'm trying to go through, I feel like we have so many substitutes today, I can hardly read anymore. What I'm trying to understand is what posture we'd be going forward after this. Would the decision on the replacement statue still be decided by the General Assembly? And we'd receive a recommendation from the Commission? Or would the Commission have that authority? Would we be giving that authority away?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I would respond to the senator that, first of all, the Commission has to be established, and of course, you see the number of persons who will be a part of the Commission. There will be eight individuals. They will first meet and decide whether or not the statue is to be removed. They've got to make that decision first. And if so, they would decide whom that person would be, and then they would report back to the General Assembly. That is correct.
Further question?
Just one more question, just so I understand on today.
Senator Yields?
I yield.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
So the Commission would make a determination, they would make a suggestion, and then we, the General Assembly, would get to consider their suggestion.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, as I understand my own bill, that is correct.
I thank the senator.
Thank the senator. For what purposes? The senior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan, rise.
Speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor, to the floor substitute, Senator has the floor.
Very briefly, just to, to further elaborate on the senator from Portsmouth's answer, it's pretty clear if you look on lines 25, the Commission is to make a recommendation to the General Assembly. But it's the General Assembly that has to decide until Congress who is in Statutory Hall. So that stays with this body.
For what purposes? Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson, rise.
General lady, yield for a question?
Which?
Oh, I'm sorry. Senator from Portsmouth.
Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Yield?
I yield, Mr. President.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
I would ask the gentlelady, is there anything prevents this Commission from looking at either statue, if they want to replace either statue? In other words, either George Washington or Robert E. Lee?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I would respond to the senator that, right now, it only refers to the Robert E. Lee statue.
Further question?
Would the gentle, or would the lady be amenable to making it to either person? Or, I mean, are we wedded to having both persons in Statutory Hall?
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, if the senator so desires, he can make that, that amendment.
Further question?
I know this is going by a day, but I do think it's important. Could, would gentlelady object to taking it by another day to do that?
Mr. President, I have no objection to taking the bill by for the day.
Thank you.
Thank the senator. Without objection, Senate Bill 612 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 911, a bill relating to parking of vehicles, electric vehicle, charging spots, civil penalties.
Junior senator from Chesterfield, Senator Houshman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that SB 911 go by, pass by for the day.
Thank the senator. Without objection, Senate Bill 911 will go by for the day.
Senate Bill 64, a bill relating to paramilitary activities penalty, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary with a substitute.
Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I move the committee substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted. Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I move that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third constitutional reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 71, a bill relating to possession of firearms, other weapons on school property, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary.
Senator from Portsmouth, Senator Lucas.
Had to get my mic on. Yes, Mr. President, I move that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 183, a bill relating to memorials for war veterans, reported from the Committee on Local Government with a substitute.
Senator from Akamak, Senator Lewis.
We've orchestrated, Mr. President. Mr. President, I have a motion in regard to that, in regard to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, members of the body, we're having a little difficulty here. We tried to deal with this yesterday. The version that's out is not what we agreed to in the melee of local government when we heard the three bills. So I've talked to all three patrons, and Senator Locke's bill was the consolidated version. We all recognize what was intended to be in there. So I have a substitute ready, and what I'm going to do is, is ask that this move, this be referred, re-referred to local government, and we're going to have a meeting right here at my desk immediately upon adjournment.
Question is, shall Senate Bill 183 be recommitted to the Committee on Local Government? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is recommitted to the Committee on Local Government.
Senate Bill 438, a bill relating to judicial performance evaluation risk assessment tool, use of alternative sanction, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary with a substitute, and there is a floor amendment.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the substitute.
Question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted. Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to waive reading of the floor amendment.
Question is, shall the reading of the floor amendment be waived? All in favor of waiving the reading will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor amendment is waived. Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the floor amendment, speaking to that motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, this amendment is just technical. It was something that somebody caught after the bill left, fixes a word or two, and I would move that the floor amendment, again, pass.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the floor amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor amendment is adopted. Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 676, a bill relating to zoning alcoholic beverage control licenses, reported from the Committee on Local Government.
Senator from Williamsburg, Senator Mason.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 684, a bill relating to mental health as disqualifier for firearm possessions, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary.
Senator from Williamsburg, Senator Mason.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 805, a bill relating to robbery penalty, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary with a substitute.
Junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that the committee substitute be adopted.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is adopted. Junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that the bill be engrossed in advanced to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 956, a bill relating to the Fort Monroe Authority, Civil Actions, and General District Court, reported from the Committee on the Judiciary.
Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Senate Bill 956 be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 961, a bill relating to the issuance of bonds, reported from the Committee on Local Government with amendments.
Junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that the committee amendments be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendments are agreed to. The junior senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey.
Mr. President, I move that the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Uncontested calendar, Senate Bills on first reading.
Senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I move that all Senate Bills on first reading, on the uncontested and regular calendars, that's pages 33 through 52, Senate Bill 4 through 991, that the rules be suspended and the first constitutional reading of the titles be dispensed with.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended in the first reading of the titles of Senate Bills on the uncontested and regular calendars, pages 33 through 52, Senate Bill 4 through Senate Bill 991 be dispensed with? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes forty, noes zero.
Ayes forty, noes zero. The reading of the titles is dispensed with. Senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, I now move those said bills go by for the day.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the Senate Bills on the uncontested and regular calendars now on second reading go by for the day? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bills will go by for the day.
Uncontested calendar, Senate Joint Resolutions on third reading. Senate Joint Resolution 35, establishing a joint subcommittee to study barrier crimes and criminal history records checks report. Senate Joint Resolution 39, directing.
Mr. President.
Senator from Roanoke City, Senator Edwards.
Mr. President, could this go by for the day to put it in the right section of the calendar?
Without objection, Senate Joint Resolution 35 will go by for the day.
Senate Joint Resolution 39, directing the Virginia State Crime Commission to study the effect of abolishing jury sentencing on the, on the justice system report.
Mr. President.
Senator from Roanoke City, Senator Edwards.
Could this also go by for the day to put it in the right section of the calendar?
Without, without objection, Senate Joint Resolution 39 will go by for the day.
Senate Joint Resolution 77, requesting the Virginia Center for School and Campus Safety to study firearm safety education in the Commonwealth's Public Schools report.
Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Mr. President, I would ask that Senate Joint Resolution 77 be agreed to.
Question is, shall Senate Joint Resolution 77 be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Senate Joint Resolution 77 is agreed to.
Senate Joint Resolution 81, directing the Joint Commission on Technology and Science to study consumer data privacy in the Commonwealth report.
Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President.
For what purpose? Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell, rise.
Sorry, I just noticed this. Could this go by for the day so I could talk to the patron about it?
Any objection?
No, Mr. President.
Without objection, Senate Joint Resolution 81 will go by for the day.
Regular calendar, Senate Joint Resolutions on second reading. Senate Joint Resolution 66, establishing a joint subcommittee to study the development of a framework for registered adult use of cannabis and medical cannabis report, reported from the Committee on Rules, and there is a floor amendment.
Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the reading of the floor amendment be waived.
Question is, shall the reading of the floor amendment be waived? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes, the reading of the floor amendment is waived. Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Thank you. I move that we adopt the floor amendment, and just to explain...
Senator has the floor.
This amendment is for a joint study commission on the adult use of cannabis and medical use of cannabis in the Commonwealth. And what the amendment contemplates is that any work that Jay Lark does, as we expect, that that would inform the committee's work and that they would work in concert. With that, I would, again, renew my motion to adopt the floor amendment.
What purpose, it's the senior, Senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove, rise.
Would the Senator from Alexandria yield for a question?
Well, Senator Yields.
I yield.
Senator Yields, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I mentioned the gentleman yesterday. Just want to be very clear. Now, is this a joint subcommittee or a joint subcommittee?
Senator has a floor.
Just checking.
Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding the floor amendment? Seeing none, the question is, shall the floor amendment be adopted? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes, the floor amendment is adopted. Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Finally, I would move the resolution be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the resolution be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes, the resolution is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Joint Resolution 67, directing the Joint Audit and Review Commission to study and make recommendations for how Virginia should legalize and regulate the gross sale and possession of marijuana and address the impacts of marijuana prohibition report, reported from the Committee on Rules, and there is a floor amendment.
The senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the reading of the floor amendment be waived.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor amendment be waived? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes, the reading of the floor amendment is waived. Senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the floor amendment be adopted, and speaking to the floor amendment.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This floor amendment just ensures that, as Jay Lark is studying the legalization and all of the ramifications of legalizing marijuana, that they specifically work with any work group that we are about to adopt, because that work group has specific stakeholders, and we want to just make sure that they're coordinating.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, it's the Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben, rise. Okay. No, rise. Okay. Do any other senators wish to be heard regarding the floor amendment? Seeing none, the question is, shall the floor amendment be agreed to? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes, the floor amendment is agreed to. Senior Senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that SJR 67 be engrossed and passed to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the resolution be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The resolution is engrossed in advance to its third reading. The senior Senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw.
Mr. President, before I inquire the clerk, does this complete the calendar? I'd like to make an announcement that, starting tomorrow, we will move the bills that are on the uncontested calendar on second reading, all the way through to final passage, because of what we're going to be facing over the next few days with the avalanche of bills. So that will be starting tomorrow. Uncontested calendar on second reading will go all the way through to final passage. And now I inquire the clerk. Does that complete the calendar for today?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President.
For what purpose, Senator from Akamak, Senator Lewis, rise.
For an announcement, that local government will meet here at my desk immediately upon adjournment for a very quick meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, Senator from Augusta, Senator Hanger, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise for an announcement and then a request.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd first like to announce that the Rural Caucus will be holding their annual reception this evening from 5:30 to 8:00 at the Omni Hotel. We should have a large delegation there of local elected officials and others from throughout the state, and want to invite everyone to attend. There will be food. There will not be a formal dinner. We'll have speakers, Secretary of Agriculture and the Secretary of Commerce will both be there. So I certainly would invite everyone to attend that event this evening at the Omni. And then request, Mr. President?
Yes, Senator has the floor.
My request is return to the morning hour for purposes of an introduction.
Without objection, we'll return to the morning hour. Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the Senate, I'm really pleased to have a longtime friend join us in the gallery today, former delegate Pete Geeson, who now I will call Professor Pete Geeson. He's along with his James Madison University Government and Political Science class. I'm a graduate of JMU, Mr. President, and certainly pleased to have this delegation here today, along with our good friend, former delegate Pete Geeson, now Professor Geeson. I would ask you, Mr. President, to recognize this group.
I thank the senator. Would former delegate, now professor, Pete Geeson and the JMU Government Class please rise to the gallery if you are able? Thank you all so much for joining us here today. Delegate Geeson, thank you for your tremendous leadership, first here at the Capitol, but also now at JMU, a great institution. And as mentioned earlier, some proud graduates here from JMU. And Senator Hanger, I didn't want to leave you out, because you're one of the proudest ones we know. You got your tie on today, and we appreciate what you're doing. You sat through a session today, and I hope you got to see some good things and learn a lot, but we appreciate all that you do. I would ask everybody to please join me, extending the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished guests. Do any other senators wish to be recognized for purposes of an introduction? For what purpose, it's the junior Senator from Richmond City, Senator Morrissey, rise.
Mr. President, I rise for a request that we return to the morning hour for a point of personal privilege.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the body, I would like to take you back to 1979, and it relates to the Majority Leader's birthday in one way, in one fashion. It was May of 1979, and I was getting, it was my last, just finished, just graduated from UVA, was getting ready to go to Georgetown, and it was going to be a great summer. I had lots of things planned. And my best friend was Kevin Cotter. And Kevin Cotter called me up, and he said, it was a Friday afternoon, he said, "What are you doing?" I said, "I'm getting ready to go down to the Northern Neck." I was going down there with some friends. We were going to water ski. And he said, "I want you to come to Fritsby's Restaurant in Annandale." I said, I don't even know if it's still there. I said, "Why do you want me to go to Fritsby's?" He said, "'Cause I want you to get involved in a state delegate who was running for the state senate, state senate campaign." I said, "Who's that?" He said, "Dick Sasslaw." And I said, "Who's that?" And then he said, I said, "I don't have any interest in doing that. I think I'm going to go about my business." And Kevin, my best friend, said, "Joe, Lily is going to be here." Now Lily was Kevin Cotter's cousin, and I'd met her at UVA, and I was interested in meeting Lily.